Who? Where is Tony Slusher? Hey Chief, is Tony here?
Yeah.
I'm not looking for him.
Where is she? Huh? All right. We'll call the meeting to order and state that the notice for this meeting was duly posted. There is a quorum of council here, everyone is here, and if you will stand, our third bid marshal, AF Junior ROTC, will post her colors and lead us in a pledge of allegiance.
Please join me for the saying of the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening Mayor and Council, I'd like to ask civilian Tony Slusher to come forward, crime victims liaison Tony Slusher and her husband Bobby Slusher as well. Tony. Well, I'm bringing her husband up here because he is due to retire and to facilitate you, Mayor, presenting her gift for retirement, her second retirement I should say. For the past nine years, since retiring from a police job here in Missouri City and a productive career I might add, Ms. Slusher has been one of many firsts. She was one of the first female officers in the Fort Ben County, in the entire Fort Ben County I should say, and she was also the first female officer in the city of Missouri City. Tony also became our first crime victims liaison, a duty that really takes a lot of faith, hard work and determination. She's a trailblazer of sorts here in Missouri City in many ways. Work as crime victims liaison is often a tear jerking and emotional service to provide to community members, and Ms. Slusher does it with dignity, with respect, and she epitomizes everything about the agency of Missouri City Police Department, the city of Missouri City, and the employees that work here. Tony Slusher, in her work, has allowed us as detectives, as police officers, as members of administration, to focus on the things outside of providing victim services that allow us to feel safe here in the city. Again, every officer is responsible for engaging victims of crime, however, Tony takes that to another degree. Tony is able to bring victims of crimes to court, she's able to walk them through the court process and work with social services and other agencies that provide services that if we did not have that position in place, sometimes people would not be able to take advantage of. She does a yeoman's job, so much so that in HGAC this year we were authorized a position and a half, so she's taken on work for many, many years that would probably require two people. Tony Slusher pretty much embodies and epitomizes doing more with less. She certainly deserves every accolade that we can possibly bestow upon her, and I would say deserves a round of applause for the work, the years of service, and the dedication she's shown as a member of the Missouri City Police Department and the city of Missouri City. So thank you Tony, from every officer here, from the citizens that you've served, you have taken a community and victims crime liaison job and made that something that is a benchmark for other cities around. Pearland, Sugar Land, other agencies from our area have looked to you to coordinate victim services, and many people don't know how hard you work to do so, and how little you get in support sometimes from those other agencies that depend on you so much. So again, thank you Tony, and enjoy your retirement. You've well earned every day that you'll be by yourself or bothering Bobby. (applause)
I do have a proclamation that I need to read, it says, "Whereas employment offers opportunities for greater independence, empowerment, and prosperity for residents of Missouri City, and whereas in order for all residents to realize their potential meaningful employment opportunities must be available to people with disabilities, and discrimination against people with disabilities in employment, housing, healthcare, and other public areas is prohibited by the Americans with Disabilities Act of 1990. And whereas workplaces welcoming the talents of people with intellectual disabilities are a critical part of our efforts to build safe, supportive communities and a strong economy, and whereas Texana Center will encourage employers to provide an inclusive and accessible work environment while providing equal opportunity and cost savings and enhancing productivity, and whereas the United States Congress designated October as National Disability Employment Awareness Month to encourage the integration of Americans with disabilities into our workforce." Now therefore, I, Illinois Owen, and on behalf of the city council and all the citizens of Missouri City, do hereby recognize October as Disability Employment Awareness Month in the city of Missouri City, and call upon all the employers and our community organizations in the city to observe this month.
Hi Will, I'm Kevin Barker, and I'm the Director of ADD Services for Texana Center, and I just want to thank you on behalf of Texana Center for being such a great city and supporting our individuals with developmental disabilities, and allowing us to have opportunities to work in your community. So, thank you very much for your support.
All right, item four on the agenda is public comments, this is for anyone to address council on any issue that is not an agenda item, not what all these are. This isn't agenda items, so if you're here to speak about anything other than what's on the agenda, this is your opportunity. Mr. Bro, you want to speak on your subject? Let me just say that we were going to give everybody an opportunity to speak tonight, I would hope that you all realize that some of this may be repetitious, and that's fine, please hold your comments for somewhere around three minutes, or we will be here in tomorrow's agenda, but we want to hear from everybody and give you an opportunity to speak, and you'll come up and state your name and your address so that the city can record those. So, starting with Chris Bro.
My name is Chris Bro, I live at 3815 East Valley Drive. Mayor and members of council, we live in a world of instant, constant news and information, we have tremendous access to information, both real and imagined, 24-hour-a-day news cable, blogs, and the most convenient echo chamber, Facebook. So how does one get good information? I would suggest to get good information, one must go to the source of the information, look it square in the eyes, and ask the tough questions. In the next few weeks, city staff will be sending out information on the second class of Missouri City University. MCU is an eight-month program of monthly meetings to introduce residents and business owners to the inner workings of the city. Whether you have lived in Missouri City for 30 years, or you have just moved in, this program will give you invaluable insight into how the city works. I ask you as council to encourage folks to sign up for this program and learn the facts about our great city, and meet the hard-working and highly dedicated staff that are making things happen. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chris. All right, I don't know what order these were in, so I'm just going to take them as they were handed to me, and I'll start with Karen Lambert. Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, we'll get to the agenda. Let me just make a motion first to suspend the rules and move that item to the beginning of the agenda so that you all don't have to spend the night here with us, so is there a motion?
So move second.
Council Wyatt made the motion, Council Nguyen made the second, all those in favor? Motion carries, all right.
Ten A, in ordinance of the city of Missouri City, Texas, providing for the assessment, levy, and collection of ad valorem taxes for the city of Missouri City, Texas, for the tax year 2013 and for each year thereafter until otherwise provided, providing the date on which such taxes shall be due in time to be paid, and authorizing additional penalty for the collection of delinquent ad valorem taxes in the liver covering and tortoise.
Yes, sir. Can you get his presentation up there? There you go.
Thank you. Good evening Mayor and Council, I'd like to go over a few review factors of adopting a tax rate before we go any further. In which I'd like to review the city's fiscal year, schedule, the review of the budget, some budget issues, review the tax rate, and review some alternate impacts. Missouri City is unique, I don't know if you know that or not, but we're unique. We are one of just a few cities that have a six thirty year end budget, so we adopt our budget in June, we start that budget process in January, and as we do that, we don't have our certified values until late August, or sometime in August, and so we're at a, we have a preliminary, and we estimate those values. Our budget is set before we know our actual values. We must receive both Harris County and Fort Ben County appraisal districts to calculate our effective and rollback tax rates, so we do that a couple months after our budget is passed. When we went through the budget process as we always do, some of the things that we not only tried to streamline any project or budget that we have, any program that we might have, but we also are presented with some additional programs, and one additional large program was the pay plan adjustment, or compensation and benefits package, that was directed by the 2013 budget. We completed that study and presented it to council and council committees beginning in March of 2013. On March 25th, we presented the compensation benefits study to the compensation and benefits committee that includes Mayor Pro Tem Wyatt, Councilmember Smith, and Al Yatt. On April 1st, we, the staff presented the CBS, is the compensation benefits study, to the finance committee, which is consisted of Mayor Pro Tem Wyatt, Councilmember Emery, and Councilmember Nguyen, and also to the full city council. On August 8th and 15th, we presented the ordinance, and the council adopted on two readings, the compensation benefits package, including a requirement for a 2.57 cent tax rate increase to fund these adjustments. That was done in April.
Wes, are you trying to go forward, or what side?
I'm going backwards, I want to go backwards, I think I, okay, I'm sorry, thank you. Well?
What side are you looking for? Tell me what.
I'm going the wrong way.
Yeah, you are.
Wes, yours doesn't work, I'm going.
This doesn't work?
Yours doesn't. What slide are you looking for?
The, I don't have a number, Budget Development Continued, go one more, one more? Yeah, right there. As part of the process, like I said before, we evaluated all programs and found cost savings wherever we were possible, and since 2010, we have cut 13 non-public safety positions out of the budget. And so as we culminated the budget to be presented to council, there were three programs, two besides the pay plan adjustment, that were recommended to council, that included pay plan adjustment, the five unit police motorcycle squad, and the firefighter to complete the four-man rotation, that all involved 3.87 cents, I believe. Looking at the tax rate and how that was proposed, we adopted the budget for the 2014 fiscal year, and it was based on the tax rate of .5835, and we did that in June of 2013. In August, we received our certified values and calculated the effective tax rate and the rollback tax rate. The rollback tax rate came in at .581746, which as you can see is lower than the adopted tax rate, so we can't, if we were to go over there, over that rate, that would require petition trigger and that kind of thing, so we managed to say that we could adopt a tax rate of .57375, and which would result in a $581,000 shortfall that we could manage with the contingency funding and other program amendments that we would make over the course of the year, and that's what was presented as a tax rate. This is a schedule of the effective tax, last year's tax rate of .5448 is the first column, the second column is the effective tax rate, which is .535165, the next column is the rollback tax rate of 58 cents, and then the last column is the proposed rate of .57375, and then we've included some, I don't know if you can see them or not, but some home values, if you had an $80,000 home, the difference would be a $23.16 increase. If you owned a $160,000 home, it would be about $46 increase, and if you owned a $300,000 home, it would be about an $86 increase. If the, we wanted to kind of show, if this tax rate is not proposed, then the law provides that the rate would go to the lower of the last year's rate or the effective tax rate, and that number would be the effective tax rate, which would be .535165, which would result in a $1.6 million worth of shortfall that we would have to make budget cuts for. Next slide. I want a few things to note, I wanted to point out, the total general fund budget is a total of about $35 million. The personnel costs within that fund is $24 million, and we have other contractual obligations that we're required to pay, for utilities and those kind of things, as well as other fixed costs that amount to $6.5 million. So the remaining $4.5 million is things like materials for streets, road materials, internal services for fleet service, for IT services that are charged back to each department, would be $4.5 million, and so that would probably where that cut would come from. Public safety, just a side note, public safety expenditures, that includes fire and police, amount to about $20 million of that $35 million budget. And in summary, we've reviewed the budget, and we've examined all programs within the general fund budget, and have made them wherever we could. We've also, the 2014 budget was adopted to include three new programs, that included the pay plan adjustment program, the motorcycle, police motorcycle unit, and the firefighter. Next slide. And just to review, the last year's tax rate was .5448, this year's proposed tax rate is .57375, difference being 2.895 cents, and that is to fund the three new programs. That's all I have.
Ed, do you have a comment?
It's one where I think, one of the slides that Wes showed truly as far as really makes, kind of puts this in perspective, and it is of how much, how lean our budget is in relation to the actual services that we provide. We put, you know, it's quite a bit of funds that go to personnel, and especially in relation to public safety, police and fire, making sure that our community is as safe as possible, but it is one to where for the streets and sidewalk repairs, for the special events that the city puts on, that's if the tax rate increase is not approved, based upon still the 1.4 million that's needed to continue the pay plan adjustment that was approved by the council. That then are the types of things that we're going to have to look at to figure out where do we cut, because finding 1.4 million dollars and 4 million dollars, 4.5 million dollars starts to severely reduce the amount of services that we can provide to the community.
Any comments before we go to the public? Not Karen Lambert.
Good evening, I am Karen Lambert, woman, list my address, 1515 Autumn Dunn Court, of course, in Missouri City, Texas. I am here because I want to make my statement, ask that Missouri City as a city, city council, do not raise our taxes. We have a lot of cuts that can be made, we have an excellent police department, an excellent fire department, I don't know why we would need a motorcycle cop. However, I'm also representing Texas Parkway Alliance. We on the Parkway would love to have a million dollar bridge wherever it could go, to me, that's a little bit of waste, we would love to have the gym here restored, not a new one built over at the city center, we would have, like to have a lot of things done on Texas Parkway. However, that has not happened, we got a nice little green median now, but if the taxes are going to be raised by some weird ways, let's see it raised for everybody and not just certain areas in Missouri City. We all pay taxes, we all want a piece of the pie. When you raise taxes because of the homes, my home value went down crazy, and I don't think my home should have gone down. The value of my home went down, the taxes went down, and my neighborhood went down. I have a really nice neighborhood, but seemed like it was only for somebody's convenience. Now all of a sudden, the next year and the next year, it went way back up. Is that for convenience? Is it because we need more money spent somewhere else? Again, I would like to have things done on Texas Parkway, I would like to have a million dollar bridge, I would like to do a lot of other things in Missouri City. That's my statement, I'm sticking to it, and I ask you again, Missouri City, do not raise the taxes. Thank you.
Thank you. Roger Morris.
My name is Roger Morris, I live at 15426 West Ritter Circle in Fondren Park, where my wife and I have lived for 37 years. I was, I used to sit up at that table, I was elected to council in 1979, and served for six years. Most of that time, I think I sat beside Councilman Jerry Wyatt. I was not generally in favor of increases in tax rates, I was, always thought that there are ways to cut budgets, but I think I did vote for one tax increase, because there are times when you can't make ends meet by cutting here and cutting there, you get into flesh and then bone. I am this year's president of the Fondren Park Civic Improvement Association, or Homeowners It was not a job that I asked for, and now I know why. We have been, we have been forced to recommend to our homeowners an increase in the maintenance fee of $100, going from $215 to $315 a year. I understand that's cheap a lot of places, but we had gotten used to that low rate, and the reason is simple, we can't run the association with the money we've been getting, and it's been a long time since we've had an increase. I see a correlation between the city and our subdivision of needing the money to effectively run the city in one case, association in the other, and I strongly support the increased funding, particularly the public safety. Our subdivision particularly can use extra patrols, and I think, while I do not speak officially for either the Board of Directors or for the association, I'm here speaking for myself, I think it's certainly true that increased patrolling and an improvement in the manning of fire station will be looked favorably upon. I would say one other thing, I was here a couple weeks ago at the public hearing, the second public hearing, and I noted a disquieting atmosphere. Mayor, you're lucky that you weren't there. Mayor, you're lucky that you weren't there, but you're probably used to some of the things that go on. The last few speakers made a point of being aggressive, and it's all right to be enthusiastic and to state your point with some enthusiasm, but it, it is disquieting to see the ad hominem attack, that is, the attack against people. And what was said was very much impugning the honor and the honesty of city council. As a former city councilman who was very proud of his service, I would ask that any of you who will speak after me would refrain from personal tax on council. Thank you.
Good evening, city council, citizens of Missouri City. I'll be pretty short. I support the tax increase. My brother's a firefighter, and I'd say for the cost of what looks like a tank of gas in just about anybody's car, I'd prefer to have a safer street and also for respondents to be there and obviously give their life up pretty selflessly to protect our homes. So at 20, 40, maybe 80 bucks, I think that's pretty reasonable, quite modest as a matter of fact. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mark McInerney, 2802 Spyglass Lane.
Cynthia Gary.
Good evening, mayor and council. I'm former councilmember Cynthia Linton Gary. My address is 4003 Royal Plantation Lane, Missouri City, Texas, 77459. I'm here tonight to say that I understand, because I've sat there, and I understand that at some point you do have to increase taxes in order for services to continue in your city. But it is my opinion that in these suffering times of our country and what we are currently facing, whether it's 30 cents or $30, now is the time to reconsider. I'm not saying you will never have to increase taxes, but I'm saying now is not the time. We need to be more cognizant and consider those who are on fixed incomes, because to us, no, to me, $48 isn't a lot, but there are people living in this city, $48 is a lot. They can't buy that tank of gas. And it makes a difference. And I think you guys need to, the city needs to be more physically responsible, more transparent, and more accountable for the actions. We're talking about cost of living increases for our employees. I think it's a wonderful idea. But when we make those decisions, we need to make sure we know where the money is coming from. And in addition to that, I would say that in a city that is, that does not have 70,000 people, to have a city manager and two assistant city managers, to me, is not physically responsible. So we need to rethink some things, we really do. And I still say rethink increasing taxes. I'm not saying never do it, but I'm just saying now is not the time. And I truly support public safety. I have a son who's a police officer, a husband who's a federal agent, and a sister who's a police officer. So I understand the importance of public safety, but I still understand the needs and the importance of citizens of this city. Thank you.
Another former city councilman, Skip Belt.
All these old, all these old councilmen are showing up for, when you see a crowd, you all want to wave to them. I live at 2810 Hampton, that's Missouri City, 77459. Yes, I was a councilman back in 80s, I was sitting pretty close to Roger Morris. In fact, my politics were a lot closer to Roger Morris than a lot of others. I'm here to support the city council. I can't say that I've gone over the numbers and that I've made a decision like they've made a decision, but I think all of this is a question of trust. If you don't trust the folks up there that make those decisions, then you have a right to vote them out, if that's what you want to do. But you don't, like I'll echo Roger's comment, you don't cast aspersions to them that they are not doing their level best for the city. Probably more than half of these folks, I wouldn't vote for, for, let's say, president, but I sure would vote for most of them for city council. Some that are not here, I would vote for city council, because they all have the city's best interest at heart. I do know that making a decision on city council is not a quick snap of finger. It moves glacially slow. It goes through committees, it goes through subcommittees, and eventually comes out the best recommendation that good, people of goodwill can make. Now, I'm not fond of paying maybe another $80 a year. And I would hope that I would not pay another $80 the following year, or another $80 the following year after that. But there's a time of transition, and we are coming out of a time of transition from a low point, probably back, you know, about three years ago, to where we're climbing out and people are seeing more business activity. People are feeling more optimistic. And we deferred a lot of things during the lean years. And if the decision is that we can improve our city by having this motorcycle patrol, if we can improve our city by retaining good employees, by giving them a raise or a benefit increase, if we can do a better job than what we did previous years when things were leaner, then I think we should go ahead and follow and trust the city council and their decision in this. Thank you.
Good evenings, I have to lower it for me. Good evening, esteemed council, and honorable mayor, and citizens. My name is Fred Grates. I live at 3902 East Creek Club, 77459. My wife Carol and I have been residents of Missouri City for more than 35 years. We moved here way back when, when both 1092 and the much controversial 2234 were a little more than two lane county roads. And the nearest grocery store and department stores were in Houston. As I thought about what I wanted to say tonight, I reflected on the fact that for many, many years, when I was asked where I lived, I usually responded with a kind of ambivalent, oh, southwest Houston, you know, near sugar land. I think some others have done that on occasion. It has only been over the last several years that I have been comfortable mentioning and proud mentioning that Missouri City is my hometown. I attribute this to the fact that the past and most current city council administrations have worked tirelessly in support of activities and actions that have put Missouri City on the map and established our community as a known desirable destination in its own right. I now proudly say I'm from Missouri City. And I want to continue to say I'm proud of being from Missouri City. Unlike one of the previous commentators, I think now is the time to do this tax increase. I don't like tax increases. In fact, for your information and for what it's worth, I describe myself as a key party conservative, and as such possess a very strong bias against anything that looks like big government, and of course, excessive taxation. However, after careful review, I am absolutely convinced that the requested tax increase is not an example of government excess or overreach, but is in fact something that is vitally necessary, which will strengthen our city, and I strongly recommend your support this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. I believe it's Ed Appara Matthews. Is that right? Did I pronounce it right, Mr. Matthews?
Good evening, mayor of and responsible council members, and my dear audience. My name is Ed Appara Matthews, a resident at Knanaia Home Subdivision on Staffordshire Road. Many residents have expressed their anger and disapproval of the proposed tax increase in the past two public meetings. On behalf of the Knanaia Home Subdivision, and on behalf of all citizens, all senior citizens of Missouri City, I speak. Before I speak any further on the tax increase, I have a question to the honorable mayor and all council members, that is, do you have any idea or proposal or plan when you would widen the Staffordshire Road from Scandling Road to the school? And do you know how many residents or driveways fell into the dangerous ditches, or had accidents at Staffordshire Road in the same part last two or three years? We request you to give priority to widen Staffordshire Road and save the citizens the taxpayers from accidents and death. If I were the mayor, I would have done the roads planned before doing the golf park. Kindly think of the senior citizens who struggle, live with a limited income and social security benefits. Please do not say, as in the frontier evolution, if you have no bread, eat biscuit. In short, we express protest to the proposed tax increase and request you to exempt all senior citizens from this burden of proposed tax increase.
Thank you. Mr. Matthew, I will address one part that you addressed. Staffordshire Road is being widened, it's in this current county's bond issue. If you look at the bond issue that's out there today, Staffordshire Road is being addressed. We're paying our part of that for you. Boy, we're recycling all these former council people, Eunice Ryder. That's all right, they've served their time, they can speak. They're, yeah, they're getting on the other side of the podium now. They used to be on this side, now they get on that side.
My name is Eunice Ryder, 11723 North Perry Avenue. I live in District A. Next year, it will be 50 years that I have lived in District A, and I'm a senior citizen. That said, you have been told today about $46, about $23, about $80. Very few people would take up arms for an extra $23 a year, for knowing that the police would be there when you need them, for knowing that parks would be cleaned, that EMS would arrive as first responders before the ambulance when there's an emergency. So this can't be about taxes. It just can't. There's not enough money involved to get the city in an uproar. And if it's not about taxes, what is it about? I believe it is the insistent voices of a very few who don't like you, who will do anything, say anything, true or not, to defame this council. When one is in public service for any length of time, you are approached by the sane and the reasonable voices, and you are approached by the voices which just take up space in the air. I ask that you choose carefully which voice you heed.
I believe she can get elected again. Larry Weber.
My name's Larry Weber, live at 2912 Cambridge Lane, moved here in 1974. I like to open with a quote from Winston Churchill, my dad liked him a lot. You have enemies? Good, that means you stood up for something in your life. I ran for the board a couple of years ago in our HOA, and it came up, and there were a lot of bad things said about me, the kind of combat thing was, if you elect Larry Weber, they're going to close the swimming pool. That was two years ago, I've been on the board now for about a year, the pool's still open. Why did this get started? It got started because I called the management company, said, wait a minute, why don't we just concrete over the doggone pool, save us the $30,000 to fix the thing, and $10,000 a year for liability and maintenance? It's $100,000 in 10 years that could go to be maintaining that complex instead of building a doggone pool. Why not build a gazebo for the community, come in, we're going to have a good time? By the way, our club no longer has a pool, so maybe that offsets some of the cost of a bridge and a clubhouse. And I've only been to the, I've been to the clubhouse now probably three to five times in the last year, and I haven't been there that many times the last 15 years. But all I did was ask the question, and nobody came to the source except two people in our complex. I said, Larry, did you really, you want to close the pool? No, I just asked the question. So I found out the perception not only drives the stock market, but also drives, makes you think about property too. I thought I was looking at long time, long term, as well as immediate cost. But I began to realize that if you remove an amenity like that, then people may not want to buy there. So it does have some impact. And so, since I've been here, 1974, I've had a car crush my humorous bone, I've had a kidney stone, I've had a break-in next door, I had one fire incident, and I had some drug dealings going out in back of my house. And in every case, there was a good response, and I don't want the service to diminish in any way. So in my mind, $46 a year increase for a $160,000 home seems a small price is a small price to pay to keep the good service we've got. Now, I want to make one other comment. I asked one of these gentlemen, how long you been on the police force? Six years. How long's the bench that you got in the pay raise? Six years. Looking at your numbers, 5% is what you want to kick up, and that's less than a percent a year for these guys. And by the way, two motorcycles cost a one car. A motorcycle is more responsive, and it's cost less to maintain. So there's only other way I can see cutting your taxes is to move me out of the area because I'm using too much of your services. So I'm going to close with one comment, again by Churchill. Men occasionally stumble over the truth, but most of them pick themselves up and hurry off as if nothing happened.
Thank you. Jim Young.
Good evening, council members. Jim Young. Live at 3215 La Quinta Drive. Moved to Quail Valley in 1972. Still here. Miss Irish tonight. Taxes, non-taxes. I grew up in the business world, and the solution to most problems is increased sales. And my old dad would say, son, when people walk in that door, go up and say, may I help you? And of course, they're going to say, I'm just looking. And then you say, well, by the way, I'll be right over here if I can help you. And then after a while, they're trying to look at pants and whatever. And then you go help them find the right size. Well, in my opinion, well, I'll say this first. The police and the firemen, we love you. Don't have a problem. I'm not going to be able to support this tax increase because to me, looking around and been in the business world and the sales world, and I've been for 60 years, there are other ways to do it besides raising taxes. And that's get businesses coming in into the city that's going to charge for sales tax, and they're going to pay the city tax. To me, that's the way to do it. And you go, you go, you know, the 80 bucks or whatever. I can handle that. But that's not going to be the end of it. I hear next year, there's also, I don't even remember who it was, but they're saying there's going to be another tax increase. And then there's going to be another tax increase because expenses are continuing to go up. And if we don't get new sales coming in, additional sales coming in. And to me, the way to do it, and in my other life, my job was to increase sales, increase profit, profit, cut expenses, cut safety, reduce safety, reduce turnover, and managing things. There are ways to do things. And you talk to people, and you ask who wants. I, in my philosophy, I ended up talking when I wanted to reduce sale, reduce expenses, waste. I would go talk to the truck drivers and the people that knew, that were on ground, that knew what they were doing. I never got any real help from a few vice presidents that reported this. But anyway, I appreciate what the council is doing, but to me, there's ways to do it is to get rid of these permits. I call them stupid permits that prevent people from coming into Missouri City and to leave Missouri City, based on what I hear people tell me. Thank you very much.
Frank Hester.
Mayor and City Council. My name is Frank Hester. I live at 4407 Shady River in Missouri City, 77459. I'm a newcomer to Missouri City because I moved here in 2002, about this time of year. Before moving to Missouri City, we prayed about where we should live. We looked at Sherterland. We looked at Richmond. We looked at Rosenberg. And we looked at Missouri City. And in our spirit, we knew that Missouri City was where we were supposed to be. And I thank the Lord every day that we made that decision based upon the leading of the Holy Spirit. Missouri City is a great city. If you read the press and read what's taking place about Missouri City, you know it's a great place. Why is it a great place? Because of our police, because of our fire, because of you, the City Council, because of the public works, because of all the people that work here. They deserve the raise that's in this budget that's been approved 7 to 0 by the City Council. Fire and police? Let me talk a little bit about police in Missouri City and where I live. It's hard for a police officer to sit and catch people speeding because they're in a car. But if they're on a motorcycle, they can place themselves in a conspicuous spot and catch the speeders that go up and down University, Riverstone, and other areas. So I'm in favor of the police having the fire, five motorcycle officers. As far as the fire department, I think we need to be fully staffed. Where I lived for 33 years before moving here, the house next door caught on fire. And the fire people responded quickly, but they were understaffed. We need to have fully staffed fire department, fire trucks, and fire staff. The other thing I'd just like to say is that if you look at the increase, it comes down to anywhere between $2 and $4 a month. You could give up Coca-Colas. You could give up the Starbucks. You could give up a little something, even if you're on a fixed income. You could give up something, and you won't be out. Because the city will be much better. And I'd like to ask each of the City Councilmen, as I look at you, vote in favor of this tonight because it's your duty and my duty to live here and support the city in every way we can. So I ask each of you to support this tonight. Thank you very much.
Linda Ricks.
Good evening. I'm Linda Ricks. I live in, on Courtside Place Drive in Missouri City. And I have been here since 1998. I think that there is some confusion here as a 7 to 0 agreement because I'm under the impression that there are a couple council people who do not agree with this increase. That's number one. Number two, I've heard so many numbers being thrown out until my head is spinning. I've heard about gallstones. I've heard about a whole bunch of other things that are not pertinent to this tax increase. We that live in the area where Texas Parkway and the lady who spoke from the Alliance, Texas Parkway is actually a mess. There are places that are to turn into nothing. There's no place to go. Even the police have complained about that. Also, if I would be for this tax increase, if I was going to have a new golf course in my area, if I was going to have a tennis course in my area, if I was going to have these things over here in Texas Parkway, I would, I'm able to speak as everyone else has. And I would ask that you respect that, please. So you said not to speak about council and disrespect them. Don't disrespect me. So if I had a $10 million courthouse, City Hall that's going to be built, golf course that's already, golf carts that's already been purchased, the courthouse has been moved, the police station has been moved, everything has been moved out of this area. And there are not any very good things in this area for us. We're not trying to divide this city. But we want what is fair. And that is what we ask for. And it's not fair. The people that are working on council are supposed to work for everyone, not just for people who are agreeing with you. I don't play golf. And there's not a lot of people that do in my area. But we have that. We went along with that in order to build the city to make it better. And now, as this gentleman just said, there's another tax increase for a bigger this and a bigger that. But nothing is over in this area. It's all been put someplace else. Why can't we balance the scale? And that's what I ask. And if we're going to talk about the Holy Spirit, let's do it right under that. Thank you.
Thank you. Sam Rubikoff.
Good evening, council, residents of Missouri City. Thank you for doing this. I commend the council for even doing this public hearing on a vote that was 7 to 0 already. Yes, I'm for the increase in public safety in our lives. If safety is not first, we don't have a life. Safety's first. I do not have a fireman assigned to me. I do not have a policeman assigned to me. It's assigned to the city. I want them to be at my house before I'm holding ashes in my hands if my house burns on fire. The common thread that I've heard tonight is raising taxes. Tax increase. I've hardly heard, and I'm an accountant, I've hardly heard anybody say tax rate increase. What really happened two or three years ago? All the people that I've talked to, the values of their homes plummeted. Mine went down over $20,000. I've heard $40,000. I've heard at least $10,000 of other homes. They can only come back up in the essential appraisal district 10% a year. It might take five more years. This is a tax rate increase of 5%, which probably will still be a shortfall. I'm an accountant, and I haven't even looked at all the detailed numbers. I just know in my gut, it's not enough money. It may not be enough money next year or the year after. That's very unpopular for me to say, but that's the truth. So when you look at your tax statement from five years ago, you're going to realize that it's less. This year, you look at your tax dollars, the tax amount that you pay, forget about the rate, the tax amount that you pay might have been $300 five years ago. It's going to be $250 this year. Look at every one of your statements, and you'll see that. You'll see a decrease. I hear the TPA. It sounds like there's some hurt on the TPA side. For roads, to me, that's a bond issue item. Another council, another former councilman said, we need to know, we need to make sure we know where the money comes from. Well, when the Ford Bend appraisal district doesn't get the dollars out in time and the budget's being done, and it was already explained that way, how do they know? That's a big wild card. That's a huge wild card. Let's not blame the City Council for something that's being done by appraisers. They've just trying to get their money back for the city so they can support us as citizens. If there's other issues that are out there, whether it's against councilmen or whatever, or if it's a budget issue, bring it forward to the next year. Let's move forward. We've got a bond election coming up. We've got so much more on the platter. Let's move forward, City Council. Don't be held back by the few of this city that may have just moved into this city. Thank you.
Well, we're down to another former councilperson, Scott Mosley. Guys, we've got a lot of these guys that have served their times, so.
Mayor, council, city staff. My name is Scott Mosley. I live at 1911 Hilton Head Drive in Thunderbird North. I come before you tonight to ask you to support this tax increase. I don't have any quotes to offer you, but I can say that Scott Mosley wants you to pass this tax increase. Now, I'm not going to besiege you with all the facts and figures and numbers, and you've heard all of that. But if I could, I'd like to offer you a short history lesson. I moved to Missouri City 40 years ago. I counted it up. It is 40 years ago. I lived in several locations before I settled where I am now. And I have a vested interest in Missouri City. I want to see it succeed and do well. The wife and I were contemplating relocating a couple of years ago, but I said, no, we're going to make a stand. We're going to stay here because Missouri City is moving. It's on the way up. Back when I moved here 40 years ago, Highway 6 was just a skinny little two-lane backtop with a railroad track running down beside it. Everything south of Highway 6 was frost ranch with horses and cattle. Cartwright Road didn't exist in its current configuration. 2234, there was nothing along 2234 when I moved here, except a few deer here and there. The City Hall was a skinny little building, about half or perhaps a third the size of this very room. All of it. The police and fire building was next door and an even smaller building. The city had one major piece of firefighting equipment. They look like it belonged in a fire museum. I think there was two police cars. I remember my very first City Council meeting that I went to. Mayor and council were discussing two topics. One of them was how to raise a little extra revenue for the city secretary so she wouldn't be courted by their cities to move to them. The other was, some of the residents, primarily from Findon Park, and Roger might have been one of them, I don't know. But they were complaining about lack of fire and police, and they wanted more fire and police. I remember the mayor saying, well, okay, if you want more fire and police, we don't have a lot of revenue. The only revenue came from the place up on Cravens and Highway 90. We had one industry in the city. Anyway, he said, look, if you want to compete, you're going to have to come up with some revenue, some additional taxes. Here we are 40 years later. We're talking about the very same things. Identical. But I believe that if you're going to move on, you have to support the city. The city employees deserve a good payment, a good salary, or else we'll lose them to some other entity. I truly believe that the fire and police in Missouri City is one of the finest. When you talk to people about why they came to Missouri City, it's always that. Fire and police are good. We have a good department, both of them now, but we want to keep it good and make it better. Now, I don't know how each of you come down on this subject, but I know there is a cry among some folks that says, okay, if you vote for this tax increase, we'll vote you out of office. When you were each sworn in, you took an oath to uphold what was best for the city. And I charge you to do just that, to do what's best for the city. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Chris Allfree.
Chris Allfree. 3127 Glen Lakes Lane, Missouri City, Texas. Also speaking on behalf of my retail business in Missouri City and also my litigation support company in Missouri City. I love Missouri City. We've got great residents. What we don't have is good financial management. I moved here in 2006. I bought a house because I saw great people. I saw a great opportunity. But what I've watched since 2006 But what I've watched since 2006, I've watched the city council spend over $30 million on a golf course, on tennis courts, on a community center, while I've watched streets right outside this place fall apart. Now, for six years, none of you gave a darn about those police officers or those firefighters. Because while you were spending $30 million on a golf courts and tennis courts, you didn't give any of them a raise. You didn't even bring it up. And now, all of a sudden, you want to call all these people, and you want to tell them that somebody's fear mongering them, and you want to go out and knock on their doors and say, you need to come to the city council because there's people against our tax rate? We're not against your tax rate. We love our employees, we love our city, we love our residents. What we're against is your financial mismanagement, and we don't want to give you another $1.7 million to mismanage. And I don't think these residents want to give it to you either. The point is, it's not about the $28 or the $30 a year, it's about what you've done with the money you've taken from this city. You've been in charge of this city for almost two decades. Any problem that's facing this city right now, you and Jerry Wyeth hold in your hands. And several of these city council members that were in here hold it in their hands as well. Because for seven years, you haven't done anything but build something in Quail Valley while Texas Parkway has been vacated by more retail businesses than I can even think of. And guess what? All those retail businesses get sales tax. They get money that comes into this city. And on top of that, you stand up at your State of the Union, you talk about $565 million of new business assets, but you fail to tell that audience that you gave all of them tax abatements. I own two companies too. You can smile all you want up there, it's not right to these residents when you give some multi-million dollar company million dollar tax breaks, and then you tell them, oh, well, it's only $30 a year, don't worry about it. Well, it's more than $30 a year. It's about principle, it's about ethics, and it's about doing the right thing. Go back at that budget, look at it, figure out where you took that $465,000 loss that you have over on the city center, and you're taking out of the budget now. Tell these people honestly what you're doing. Tell them about that $500,000 you took from the Metro Mobility Fund to build a $1.2 million cart barn. You could have bought those motorcycles with that $500,000. So let's get to the real facts. It's about financial mismanagement, it's not about taxes. I hope you do the right thing.
Charlie Butera.
Mayor, council, staff. Charles Butera, 2818 Lakeview Drive, 77459. I think any one of you that know me, and there's a few people out in the audience that know me, I'd say I'm a conservative, and I hate paying taxes. Any taxes. I don't care, even sales tax. I don't like any taxes. That's how I made my living for years, was not paying taxes. In the past few weeks, I've seen a lot of rhetoric out there, and I decided that I needed to do a little research. And I started weeding out the facts as they were presented, and I realized there weren't a lot of facts in what I was reading. There was a lot of personal attacks on people, which is completely uncalled for. There were attacks on neighborhood associations who had nothing to do with this, but that's okay, they can handle it too. We were trying to drag everybody under that we could. Didn't understand it, I still don't understand it, because the facts just are not there. There was a bunch of talk about real estate values plummeting in the city of Missouri City. And that was true about six years ago. That is not the world we live in today. And I would suggest to anyone that if they want to say something like that, well, get out and find the facts as they are. The facts are all over the papers, the real estate people tell you what the facts are. And houses are selling for more in most of Missouri City than they have in a number of years. So I think people need to understand the facts, because it's like the old saying, liars figure and figures lie. There's a lot of stuff out there that didn't make any sense. I want to thank each and every one of you for the time you give, because I know it's a thankless job. Anytime you're in a semi-public or public position, there's not a lot of kudos that come your way. But I do know that you take time away from your personal life and your professional life to serve this city the best you can, just like you swore to do when you came here. And that's all we ask you to do tonight. And as much as I dislike taxes, we need it, let's get it, and let's move on down the line, appreciate all of your help and the city's help. Because these people deserve a raise, they work hard, and we don't need to say anything about the police and firefighters, because they are the best. I've had very little dealings with them, thank goodness. But that's okay, I hope to keep it that way. So thank all of you for your time and your trouble, and please keep Missouri City in mind, we need you. Thank you.
Margaret Garner. She's already gone. Past Margaret's bedtime. Ed Biles.
Thank you. Thank you all. My name is Ed Biles. I've lived here longer than anybody, 1973. I moved into Missouri City, there was 3,600 people in Missouri City. We now have between 60 and 70,000. You people up there deserve a lot of credit. As I look at Money Magazine and CNN Money, we're the third most affordable city for home buyers, top 10 in 19... In 2008, we were number 56. In 2010, we advanced to number 21. Now we are number three. That's based on economy strength, quality of health care, low crime rate, and great school. We are now in the top 10 in the country. We have two dozen parks within 30 miles. We are recognized in this state as the fifth safest, safest city in Texas. State, we are most diversified according to all the records. We have 56 different languages being spoken in our school system. We have homes for all, medium, low, and high price. You can get a three-bedroom house for less than $100,000. Golf course, yeah. I play golf, but sometimes I don't play golf. But the golf carts have done a little bit for your property values. In 2009, when the golf course was going down, roads were being torn up, prices in this area, homes were selling for $62 a square foot. I have just listed my house last Thursday for $75 a square foot. I've had six visits, and I've had an offer. So the people up here must be doing something right. And I want to commend all of you. You know, it's awful easy to be negative. Very easy to get from being negative because you've got a personal agenda about somebody. Tell you how proud I am of Missouri City. I speak a lot in a lot of different places. People ask me where I'm from, I say, I'm from Missouri City, Texas. They ask me, where's that? I say, you've probably heard of Houston, that's a suburb of Missouri City. That's how proud I am of Missouri City. I'm watching that clock because I only got three minutes. I also want to say, Neil, Noel, we've got an election coming up, both of you, be positive. Tell me what you're going to do. Don't tell me what's bad about Allen. I know what's bad about Allen. Allen, don't tell me what's bad about Noel. Tell all of us what you are going to do to improve our schools, our system. I don't want to hear all the BS about how bad both of you are. Tell us what you are going to do to make this a better city. I've got five seconds. Thank you all, congratulations all of you.
Maybe we need to get you back coaching the Texans. Kobe Hess.
Hey, that's fire.
Come on, Kobe.
Yeah, Coach, they could probably help you.
We at the bottom of the stack yet?
We're not even half.
All right, all right. I promise I won't use one minute, maybe a minute and a half. I'm Kobe Hesse. I live at 6427 Ivy Falls, and been in Missouri City for 37 years. I know I don't look that old, but I have. The, one thing I can tell you for sure, I hate taxes worse than Charlie Butera. Way worse. But I got to ask you all to think with me for just a minute. When I thought about this tax increase, I thought, when, and tell me truthfully, when you pull up to a stoplight in Missouri City, do you ever look around to see if there's anybody there that may be wanting to carjack your car? When you go to the store, do you ever take your jewelry off, just in case, you know? When your kid goes to school, do you walk him to the, to the school bus? Well, my point is, I know we've got very good statistics, we have very good law enforcement in this city. But you know what? I don't think it's good enough. Until we get rid of some of those things, the questions I just asked you, you know, I think we need to just keep trying to do a better job. And for $48 a year, I think that's a pretty cheap, pretty cheap price. One other thing I'll just say, because there's been a lot of comments about the golf course, and I spent a lot of my time, after I retired, working on, trying to work something out for that golf course. So I look back today, I ask myself, have we done a good job? Have we over, have we wasted that money? Well, I'll tell you one thing I remember. Prices were going down when we started that process. The neighborhoods around us, prices were up 20, 25% over a three-year period. We were up 1% in Missouri City. And so I looked online this morning to see what the average price per square foot has done recently. Well, in the last 12 months since we opened the golf course, home values in Missouri City according to Trulia are up 15%. That compares with Sugarland, which is up 8%. Now, there's something, something's happening. I got a feeling that at least the golf course is probably paying for itself. Because we know, we know that if that golf course, if it just saved 5% of the home values in this city, that was going to save $170 million in homeowners' equity. And that'll pay a whole lot of taxes, probably close to a million dollars in taxes a year, which more than pays for the golf course. So, see, I made that first part of negatives I could, so y'all wouldn't be going bragging on you. But I do appreciate all your very hard work, and please, let's keep Missouri City growing.
Janice Scanlon.
Hi, I'm Janice Scanlon. I live at 2910 Nancy Bell, 77459. I've lived here for 37 years, and I am a senior citizen. So I wanted to come tonight and say I support what the council is doing. And the reason I support it is because I don't think we can afford not to. I want you to think about what this might do to employ morale. Just think about that. I mean, that's an unintended cost of this that I don't even think we can quantify. And God forbid, I have to have someone come to my home. I don't want to say, well, I was afraid to spend $50 for this. So I hope I, I support you in going forward with this, and thank you.
Susan Rosen.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name is Susan Rosen. I live at 4611 Bayview Court, Missouri City, 77459. I am here to let everyone know that I support the increase in taxes, and I think that while, while there's still people that are saying, upset about what has been spent on certain things, I don't think it's right to penalize our police and firemen who do an incredible job because of what might have been, happened in the past or whatever. We have the finest policemen, policemen and women, and firemen and women around. They are making less money than some of the surrounding areas. They deserve what other police and fire departments are making. To me, public safety is a big issue. I live by myself, I want to feel safe and secure, which I do, thanks to the good policemen and women. Anyway, I'm definitely for it. I appreciate all that the council does and the mayor. Y'all are doing a great job. I support your decision, whatever that is, and thank you for all your hard work.
Dr. Wedemeyer.
Good evening, thank you for allowing me to speak. I'm Dr. Lissa Wedemeyer, live at 2802 Brookline Circle in Missouri City, 77459. I also have a business on 6026 Highway 6. I would like to say that as a business owner, being on the corner of Highway 6, Murphy Road, and University Avenue, there's tons of accidents there all the time with all the major intersections coming in. There's been a lot of robbery and other businesses around our area that I am fortunate to not have had to be a victim of, and I know that the police are there weekly, more than once or twice in that area to protect our businesses. You're talking about businesses coming in and tax increases, and this area is growing like crazy because it's a wonderful place to have a business. And I think having a motorcycle policeman would be just a wonderful asset to our community. I live in the patio home section across from the city center. Three, four years ago, our entire neighborhood was surrounded by weeds and huge trees that were just growing in when the neighborhood was being neglected by the fact that the golf course went down. And now we have increased property taxes. In my neighborhood, there's been a fire, and several senior citizens that have had to call 911. And we've had emergency care there immediately. A house that would have burned down was not completely demolished because the fire department was there instantly. I also like to say that I enjoy outdoors activities. I'm a kayaker. I can't tell you how many times I've put my kayak in the water over at Buffalo Run, which is a very nice park on the Fonderin side of our community, and community center area, community park. I ride my bike over there all the time. So I really think that we need to think when we talk about where enhancements have been made in this community. I don't really think you can pick one area and say there has not been improvement, because I'm here to vouch for the fact that our community has grown in all four corners of the area. And I would like to let you know that I want you to vote for this increase in our taxes. Thank you.
I just, Kay Joseph. They may have already left. They didn't put an item on there that they wanted to address. Amy Robinson.
Mayor and City Council, thank you for letting me address you. My name's Amy Robinson, I live at 2906 Del Monte Court, Missouri City, and I've lived out here for 25 years. I grew up in Sharpstown. Twice the house that my mother and I lived in... Twice, the house that my mother and I lived in was burglarized. I walked into the house and found what had happened. It took two hours to get police to my house, and it was scary. And I've lived out here for 25 years, thank goodness. I've not had my house burglarized, but I've had reasons to have to call the police. They've been there within 10 minutes, and I've usually known them. We're so lucky to live in this area. I love Missouri City. I... It's just a wonderful area, and I... Wise people have spoken tonight on both sides. I understand, but I'm a single mom. I'm going to school. I have a son in college. But $50 a year for me to spend extra for these services and to help our public servants is not a big deal. So, I'm in support of the tax rate. Thank you.
Thank you. Bertha Eugene.
My name is Bertha Eugene. I live at 2134 Mustang Springs Drive, Missouri City, Texas. Mayor Owens, council members, good evening. I don't have a personal agenda, but it becomes personal when I think of public safety and the excellent job our police staff and the firefighters are doing. My response is remarkable. And I don't think anyone here can argue that fact. Yes, there may have been inaccurate decisions made in the past, and yes, there will be some decisions made tonight and in the future that everyone will not agree with. However, past errors serve as a learning experience. We live, learn, and move forward. I am a senior. When the price of gas increased, I learned to adjust and continued to purchase the gas and other things that increased as well. You may ask, what does the price of gas has to do with the tax increase proposal tonight? I'm glad you asked. When I consider my safety, the safety of my children, grandchildren, and the citizens of this city, and the results that can be brought about by adding a motorcycle traffic union, unit, and one more firefighter, the cost is priceless. Can we afford to lose good city staff over a small increase? That's a question that only each individual can answer for themselves. Every day, I try to find something positive to concentrate on and talk about. There has been enough cons. Let's work together to get the pros to outweigh the cons. I search my heart and support this tax increase. I hope each and every one of you sitting before me tonight would do the same and search your heart and do what is best for all of us living here in Missouri City. I thank you for your time, and thank you for allowing me to speak to you tonight.
Thank you. Jim Wilson. Did they represent you leaving? It's bad as filibuster, isn't it? Thank you for coming.
Hi, I'm Jim Wilson. I think the time should have been... Should have started when I stood up. Because I've got three minutes to get here. I'll make it quick and simple. Four guys, well, three guys and a gal, that gave tirelessly to our city for years and years and years, and may even remember Allen when you and Jerry were rookies. I think Scott was a rookie right along with you. Y'all have done a wonderful job. These guys know that you have, and we certainly are willing to spend the $80 a year for increasing our quality of life that you guys have worked for tirelessly for all the many years that I have been here. I'm 110% for the tax increase. Thank you.
Thank you. John Dale.
My name's John Dale, and I moved here in 1976. Been here an awful long time. And I've got to say some things that... Congratulations to City Council. First of all, the... The great thing was done with our golf course. I just hate to... Hate to even think what our property values would be like if that was not done successfully. So, good job. The next thing is, look at Sienna. Look at Riverstone. And then, let's take a look at this East Corridor. Look at all the activity out there. Prosperity has come to Fort Bend, and we are sharing in it, and it's... And I thank you guys for doing your part. I would like to say, though, that I would like to have my property... Pardon me, my taxes the same as Stafford.
Yeah, me too.
Can we work on that?
Yeah, me too.
Okay. Well, so much for that. But anyway, good job.
Thank you. John Wicks. Is John still here?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'd like to first address the council, and thank you for hearing us tonight and our comments. I'd like to vote against the property tax increase with great opposition. I believe that we're getting fewer services than our neighbors in Sugar Land with... and already are, and we're paying... Would be paying more money if the taxes are increased. Also, when my taxes go up, my ability to provide to my family goes down, and we can't even be expected as taxpayers to be responsible for subsidizing inefficiencies without first looking for ways to find savings from within. Thank you.
Thank you. Jim Hillier.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, and my citizens, and my neighbors and my friends. Jeannie and I are here tonight to support the tax increase, and the reason is very plain and simple. If you take a look at any budget, whether you're a state, community, federal government, your number one expense is what? I think everybody knows that. Safety. It's safety. That costs a lot of money. Lots of money. You gotta understand, our firefighters, our police are extraordinarily trained through academies, through all of the... All of the training that you go through, and they're under a lot of pressure. I can't imagine being a police officer or a fireman and getting that call. You all heard about that call, 3:00 in the morning? Yeah. Well, I wouldn't want to get that call and have to rush out to a fire or to help someone. One of the things that is disturbing when I look at what's happening in the areas around us, when you look at not Houston, but all around, look at the crime. Can you imagine? Can you imagine what's going on around us? I'm not talking about Houston. I'm talking about all around us, and we're pretty safe, aren't we? Jeannie and I have lived here for 30 years. 30 years. We've raised our kids here, and of course, the kids, they got in trouble. I got in trouble. Jeannie never... She never gets in trouble. But the police have been absolutely professional in every case, and that's just because of the management. We got excellent management of this city. They know what the priorities are, and you gotta keep in mind your priorities, and priorities is safety. You can't have a city like we have that has broken safety records. We have been noted of being one of the safest places to live. I've traveled. I've had to leave my family alone, and they've always been protected, and that really means a lot. It's really gives me a lot of comfort. So, when I look at what is... When you ask for a tax increase, I say two things. Two things. What are the benefits, and what's it gonna cost? That will make my decision. And the benefits, of course, if you have five additional police officers, and they're on Highway 6, and they're on Murphy Road, and they're on Texas Parkway and Cartwright, and they're chasing down speeders, those patrolmen are in your neighborhoods. They're there all night. That's what we have to have. That is security, and it costs. This is not free. Freedom isn't free. We know that. It costs. That is a number-one expense. When you look at firefighters, when you looked at what's happened in Houston, those tragedies, those firefighters getting killed, right in Houston? When you have the tragedies all over the nation? We don't have those kind of problems because we're somewhat staffed, but we need more people. There's nothing worse, in my opinion, than having to wait for police to arrive. Every police officer in this country I would give credit to as they're absolutely great because they've been trained great. They went through the academies and that. But the problem in most communities is they don't have enough of them, and that's the key. You have to have enough. So, you give support to those... To the citizens and to the police officers, and that's why I support this. I... I will support it with my tax dollars, and I think that is a prudent and a wise thing to do. So, thank you very much, and... Oh, I'm from 3007 Canyon Court. Y'all have a great evening. God bless this city. God bless this state, and God bless America.
Here's another former council member, Joe Workman. We got three or four more out there, I think.
I don't know how many more council members there are here. Uh... Mayor Council, I'm Joe Workman. I live at 3815 Lamplighter Circle. I had the pleasure of serving for eight years on this council, and the whole time I was on council, we prided ourselves in having a very lean staff and public safety force. We tried to pay them at market because we felt that we were asking them to do more with less, and so, it's very important that we do keep their salaries at market, and I'm very much in favor of increasing their salaries for both public safety and the staff. Additionally, this city has grown, and I'm not surprised that we need to add a few police officers and firefighters. It's... It is important that we have our vehicle staff, the fire truck staff properly. A fire truck with one man on it cannot go into a building. It takes a couple people on every truck, and that's very important. So, I support this tax increase, and if somebody thinks that our taxes are a little bit too high here and they'd rather live in Stafford or Sugar Land, they're welcome to do it. We just don't happen to have 59 running through our city. Thank you.
Thank you. David Fish.
Mayor, Council, thank you, and citizens. There's been a number of things said tonight. I've addressed everyone on City Council this weekend. If you received my email, and I'm not going to reiterate that. I've listened to some things tonight. I'd just like to make a couple quick comments as well as to support other comments that have been made in support of the tax increase. Number one, I was in attendance the night, the first meeting that was held in relationship to this golf course, and there was not one single solitary mention, vote, disparaging comment, or anything against doing what this city said it would have to do. And I would encourage people to put this one to rest once and for all. It's not about the golf course. I've heard about the golf course not being in my community. That probably was a true statement a few years ago. If you're a resident of Missouri City, it is in your community now, and it has not moved in 40 years that I know of. It's been there all along. I don't know how we can drag it up and move it somewhere else, but I'm not trying to be smart, but we just can't beat a dead horse. The other thing that comes to mind tonight, and I'm very cautious about what I'm about to say, but I will preface it by saying, my mother died at 96, my dad died at 89. My children have grown up. Some of them have moved away and come back to this city. They live in this city. My grandchildren live in this city. I hope and pray that when I'm 80, 85, 90 years old, that I continue to want to see this city grow for their sake and not to have it stopped for my sake. I understand we're not all in the same situation, but I deceit you. There's a lot of people who were sent in this city before us that sacrificed a lot for the people in this city that were older people, and I'm about to be one, as a lot of us are, and so, I want to address that. And my final comment is, one nice thing about these taxes, they stay here. We get to see the benefit of these taxes. They're not being sent off somewhere to be used in some other community, some other state. So, I appreciate what you all have done. I know it's a tough job. This is a great city. I've been here 30 years. I appreciate it. I've moved four times within this city, and I hope to live and die here, and I thank you all for everything you've done. Thank you very much.
Thank you.